Good evening. Thank you, everyone, for your patience in getting underway. Superintendent Hertz, would you like to set the stage here? Or would you like to defer to Deputy Superintendent Hertz?
Both Deputies. Just thank you, everybody, I'll just say, for being here this evening. This has been a pretty involved process, or at least the expectations, to try to make sure we do our best to collect meaningful input from stakeholders, educators' families, from across the system, under a pretty unreasonable timeline, to be honest. But we've, I think, given it a really good fave up. Hopefully, from what you hear tonight, you'll see that reflected in some of the analysis after synthesizing thousands of points of input. So I don't know of another district in the state of Oregon that has done this comprehensive job, to be honest, just from talking to many of my colleagues. So I'm thankful that we were able, despite the timeline, to really collect as much feedback as we have. So tonight, you're going to hear progress about sort of the needs assessment and some of the thinking out in the community, but also, as we develop internally, what are some of those key ingredients as a strategic plan emerges? What is that framework? And how does it actually align with what the community is calling for, especially as we think forward to a vision the community defined this past year? So I'm going to turn it over to our executive lead sponsor on this, Deputy Superior Hertz.
Good evening. I'm pleased to have the school board and the community budget review committee in the same room. It's great to have you here, hearing this together, having a chance to dialogue and talk to one another as we're rolling out this first flush. Can I call it the first flush of strategic framework for our form of public schools? So we will be engaging with you multiple times in this work. But so, starting with goals for tonight, we really want Russ Brown has tabulated our needs assessments from all the community groups, staff meeting groups, leadership groups, we've pulled together to develop, go through the needs assessment process. So that is, he'll be sharing that with you tonight. And then also, just going over the first draft of the strategic plan framework, and really looking at, as we look at the needs assessment from the community, how does that align with what we're bringing forward with our strategic framework? And really looking at our draft focus areas. And we'll also be, once we go through this process tonight, we'll take your feedback and input. You have a facilitator at each table and a note taker at each table, so that we can gather your input and then incorporate it in round two, which is on November 19th. So without further ado, I'd like to, oh, I've got one more slide here. There we go. So in terms of what we've been working on, last year, many of you engaged in our visioning process, so that's where the work started. So we started taking what we heard from the community all last year, and Jonathan Garcia, how many data points did we collect?
Sixteen thousand.
Sixteen thousand data points from our community. And that's where this vision has been developed, and you have copies on your table, and I think Stephanie is showing you which I didn't have in. And then out of that came the graduate portrait, educator essentials, and system shifts. And so those are the things that we're looking at, how do we get these items into our strategic plan? Now, being that we have both state and federal components in this work, right now, in December, we have a continuous improvement plan for federal requirements due to Oregon Department of Education. So that is something that we're doing for, in the first week of December, that's due. So that's why we have this scrunched up timeframe in October for a needs assessment, so we can have this ready by the first week of December. And then after that, this is the state process. We have a student investment account, Student Success Act. There's actually two other components of funding that they're still writing the rules, and we're not quite sure how we're going to access them yet, but we know there's more funding coming. So that is then due to the Oregon Department of Ed in March, so that'll be the second round. And we are also, so federal, state, and then this is our district plan. They're really all the same plan, right? But they each have their own components of requirements that we have to meet. So we're just trying to help you see that we're meeting the fed, the state, and then our own district plan, and aligning all that. So now, out to Russ Brown.
Good options are due.
On the needs assessment.
So again, good evening. Connected to the Student Success Act, we engage in a lot of engagement activities with our community. We had a survey that was out to the public. We had a number of community events where we engaged with the public and target audiences around the community. We actually worked and collaborated with our teachers' union to do a focus group and then develop the survey in collaboration with the teachers' union to capture their voices. So there were a host of activities, and in those, we collected about 5,000 additional points of information that we summarized and then put forward to help guide how we're thinking. And it was impressive how all that sort of came together. So when we looked at community engagement, there were a couple of things that sort of bubbled up to the top. So we heard loud and clear from the community, and this was at about three to one, so for about every, for the next highest level thing of interest, there were like three comments about this to the next highest level. Folks were really interested in the emotional and behavioral health needs of our students, social, emotional, that is fair as a bell. And we also heard that folks were really interested in coordination of services, so for high need families, high need students, how can we better coordinate services between the school system and external providers to make sure that we have a solid wraparound for our students? Beneath that, then, the next thing that sort of bubbled up from the community was, how do we reduce academic disparities? We're all aware, and I recently presented data to the board of the community, about our gaps in achievement. And so one of the things that bubbled up and that folks were really interested in was, how do we lean in to close academic disparities? When we turned to the teachers' union, their number one thing, with a close second, by the way, because actually, the number of people who commented on these things was incredibly close, their number one thing was reducing class size. But the number two, like I said, was close second, echoed the community's goal, how do we provide for the social, emotional welfare of our students? How do we meet their emotional and behavioral health needs? When we targeted families that were in high need, and we actually had staff who reached out and called our homeless students and homeless families to gather information from them, to really deeply understand how, what their needs were, because part of this funding is meant to address those. Again, what did we hear? Coordination of services, social, emotional needs. Things start triangulating, things start pointing to the same direction again and again. We get back to our administrators. Our administrators were very much focused on, what does it mean to reduce gaps? What does it mean to provide access and opportunity to our students, so that they can fulfill that vision of a portrait of grad? And that we close those gaps? And again, right on the heels of that, what does it mean to provide for not health, but behavioral health needs, social, emotional learning needs of our students? So consistent across all these different forms of information, all these different channels, all these 5,000 different data points, we see some things bubbling up sort of consistently. Consistent talk about social, emotional needs, and consistent talk about, what does it mean for us to be able to close and reduce academic disparities in our students to fulfill the portrait of grad? So again, we've talked about the portrait of grad before, again, year-long process to develop that. And it's really an aspirational vision for what our students can be. And really, these, you know, that the board also aligned a goal to this, that begins to flesh out, what would that look like? And how do we hold ourselves accountable for making this happen? So it puts students at the center, there's a racial and social equity focus for our students. We talk about character attributes, honesty and integrity, excellence, respect, relationships, creativity, innovation, and we're honoring multiple pathways that kids can show up and work their way through that model. To do that, whoops, sorry. We began to flesh out a strategic plan. And again, we're just at the groundwork of the strategic plan. And what we might consider to be some pillars to hold that strategic plan as we move forward. So using the visioning process as the anchor for that, we start to think about, well, what does it mean then to support educators and the transitions that need to be tapped for educators? What are the system shifts that need to happen to support, again, moving our system towards this? And how do we frame all of the above, again, with that, in that framework of racial equity and social justice? Again, we see gaps, our board has taken a position where, again, if you look at the board goals, they're explicit racial equity goals, they talk about closing gaps for students. How do we do that? How do we move forward that? And again, we don't do that through the community engagement. At this point, you had a year-long process to develop the vision for the system, you had a deep but intense period of engagement here around SSA, and we'll have ongoing engagement for the community as we move forward. So what does it look like as we think about this? When we think about the strategic framework, at this point, we're thinking about three pillars for the work. What are the academic things, academic and student supports that need to happen? What does that look like? What does it look like to change learning, instruction, and again, the environment for our students? That then obviously moves over into what does it mean for our schools, for safe and modern environments? What do they usually look like to support that people learn? And again, when we talk about shifts in terms of teaching in our workforce, that doesn't happen in a vacuum. So we're talking about human capital improvement. What do we do to help improve our educators in terms of professional development? How do we improve our workforce over time? How do we make the shifts necessary to support moving forward? So under each of these areas, there are some things that folks who own this content, so in academics, under the direction of Deputy Superior, they've begun to envision, what are some of the levers to create change? What are some of the shifts that need to happen to be able to move that forward? You can see those here on the screen. Again, differentiated support for schools, changes to instruction, multi-tiered systems of support, which really leans into that social, emotional learning, and how do we differentiate support to students who have multiple needs? And again, how do we cultivate system-wide learning? Because we're talking about, if we're going to change those for students, then we have to change how we educate, it's how teachers and how staff in the system behave. We talk about safe and modern schools, it's a little bit shorter list here. What does it look like in terms of school modernization? Obviously, folks have some passionate ideas about that, we heard a little bit about that today. Safety and security updates in schools, and IT infrastructure.
Can you go back to the last slide?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a different slide.
Whoops.
Was it revised since the board pack everything else?
You have the same slide with some differences.
I have the same slide with differences, so I'm just, was this was revised since Saturday?
So the original one that was sent to the board has been updated, and that's what you're seeing on the screen, and we also have them on the table.
Copies. I know, I tried to not use this paper. Thank you, I just thought I was maybe on the wrong page with the paper.
Yep, you're on the wrong page. So the updated ones are on the table, right?
Yes. Thank you.
She's probably the only one that has.
Can I have a new table?
So I would like to point out again, that this, again, is a draft version. It's early thinking, we're not going to gather and do that. Finally, human capital and culture. As I mentioned before, to create these changes, we actually have to focus on human capital management. And we did hear this, a multiple, you know, being strategic by who we hire? How do we hire more teachers and administrators of color? How do we retain them? Again, how do we build talent pipelines with our partners and also train the system? Again, intentional efforts to improve the workforce and have the workforce, again, better aligned to provide the support for our students as we move forward. And again, all of the above is pressed upward to create the changes that support, again, producing students who meet the promise of the portrait of grad. And the four board goals that the board adopted recently support that at all school levels. So there's a third grade goal that focuses on accelerating growth for students of color, historically underserved students of color, so that we close achievement gaps. There's a fifth grade mathematics goal. Again, we want students to have the basic numeracy skills to be able to go into middle school and perform successively. And again, focus on what it means to close gaps. Eighth grade, it's an aspirational goal. We're wanting to set the stage so that when students enter high school, they're prepared, again, to fulfill that promise of the portrait of grad. But in the meanwhile, we have a placeholder there, where we're talking about, again, some of the performance of students on S-Back in both reading and mathematics. Placeholder, because we have very big engagement to read it, but we really want to have a rubric for that aspirational goal embedded in the workaround, the middle school redesign. And then finally, the one that we probably spent the most time talking about was what it means for students to be post-secondary ready. The board landed on what I think is a pretty rigorous goal for them. They wanted students to demonstrate that they can pass three or more AP classes with a C or above, or pass three or more IB classes with a C or above, or pass three or more dual credit classes with a C or above. Yeah, it sounds pretty intimidating, does it? And then, or finish a CTE pathway, be a CTE completer with a C or above, or, again, honoring those students who could earn a C or by literacy, and demonstrate that they're fully functionally bilingual and two or more angles. The board has also been pretty clear that they want us to honor our student athletes, students who demonstrate that they're post-secondary ready via the arts. Yes, I see. The Director Lowry is nodding her head, he goes, "That's really important." That is definitely something that we will work on as we move forward.
They haven't mentioned marching band in like six weeks.
But again, the idea here with this post-secondary goal was to allow for the variety of ways that students can show up in high school and pursue a post-secondary readiness. Not all students are going to go to AP route, not all students go to CTE route, there are different pathways these students can pursue to be post-secondary ready. And the objective, again, was to provide opportunities to describe that, or, again, honor that the students who are.
Question.
Yes.
Hey, is it okay to ask a clarifying question?
We do.
And maybe this is a known thing to the rest of the group, but can you speak to why the board goals for third grade reading were centered around growth, and eighth grade is focusing on proficiency?
Sure. So third and fifth grade, we focused explicitly on growth because frankly, it's the leading indicator. In order to create a change in proficiency, to close a gap, the first thing you have to do is accelerate growth. So it is the leading indicator to see. And that made sense for both third grade and fifth grade to look at that. And it should be accumulation, from, if you think about where you came in kindergarten, where you are by third grade. And if I'm making more growth than average, then over time, I'm closing achievement gaps as well. So it was a leading indicator, and it allows us to know during the course of the year what's going on, because of the measures anchored to the NWA MAP assessment, versus waiting for S-Back and getting it, you know, in the fall. Now, eighth grade, why did we go that way? Eighth grade's sort of a cumulative measure. Where are you at that point in time? Because you have to be ready to go to high school. So it is sort of a terminal grade of sorts. Either you're going to be ready to go to high school, or you're not. And again, it's a placeholder, because we're looking at middle school redesign, and we're going to have a more robust rubric to go with that. But that being said, your proficiency in reading and your proficiency in mathematics will be core to that. They will be part of that rubric moving forward. But we will expand it to include many of the other dimensions that are more focused on the whole child person that's associated with that. Speaking of questions, I think we're getting ready to transition.
So at this point, we just wanted to open it up with different questions from the tables to see if there's any clarifying questions before we get into the conversation. You have a lot of materials in front of you. One is the presentation slide, one is your vision document, and then the third presentation vision, and then the protocol. So just wanted to make sure there are questions before we work on the facilitation at the tables.
So the problem of themes from the engagement surveys, every C or one of the four boards identified social, emotional learning as one of their top.
Sorry, Craig, Chris, help. It doesn't seem to be explicitly called out any of the focus.
Yeah, I was thinking about.
Let's get cracking.
Yeah, please just give me a message.
Yes. So in the.
Craig, this is probably going to be for you.
Yeah, so in the prominent themes and engagement surveys, all four constituencies identified social, emotional learning as one of their top two items. But going then through, past the strategic framework and into the focus areas, none of the focus areas nor any of the board goals calls out social, emotional learning in any particular focus way as something that we're doing. So where's the disconnect there? And how is that particular item that was strongly called out by all constituencies woven into the plans?
Social, emotional learning.
Yes, so to answer your question directly on the academics and student supports page, there's two themes in there that actually capture socio-emotional learning. We have the multi-tiered systems of support, which the SEL work is actually embedded through that tiered model approach, and also safe and supportive learning environments, which is also a big portion of one of our departments called the Office of Student Support Services, which houses the socio-emotional learning, mental health and wellness, rapid response, which would fall in that particular theme as well. That's a really good question.
So all the wraparound services that are planned under the SSA?
Yes, sir.
Are going to be hatched under there. What about the board goals, since none of them call out specifically any particular identifiable quantitative goals around social, emotional learning?
We can take that together. I would say that the eighth grade goal in particular that we were just talking about, that was a huge part of our conversation, and I think it's safe to say that the distillation of that eighth grade goal doesn't capture much of our intention and our conversation around that, because we are in this process of, or soon to embark in this process of middle school redesign. But that's really where our priority lay on that, is that, you know, students being ready to succeed in high school in every way, including leadership skills, self-efficacy, take it away.
So leadership is my other thing I say all the time besides music, so that's by any director, chair of concept, pointing to me. But that really did start, that eighth grade goal started with Director Moore lifting up social, emotional, and that there's narrative beyond this that gets to that, that isn't here, because we don't have the capacity to measure that yet as we're doing our middle grades redesign. But the plan is, we know that some of our places of struggle in high school really begin in middle school with the struggles around social, emotional health that are happening, and so that's a huge priority as we look at the middle grades redesign. And Director Moore was in Miami, as were some of our other folks.
Director Bailey.
Director Bailey, and they worked with some of the redesigns that Miami has done that is really focused on that social, emotional. So that's definitely something, although it's not articulated here, that is in the intention around that board goal.
Thank you. There's, just when we have, for example, the third grade goal, we know we have to attend to social, emotional issues to get our kids to the third grade goal. The reverse is not necessarily true. We could attend to social, emotional learning without improving how we deliver reading instruction. And we have kids who are better, you know, better emotionally, but not necessarily reading. So one is important to get to the other, but the reverse causation isn't true. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Do you feel that's supported by evidence?
Question.
Yes, okay, that's criticism. All right.
Hey, I just want to open it up for any more clarifying questions before we get to the facilitated process in each table. Okay, then I would like our facilitators to introduce themselves to the table if they have them already, and start with your introduction. Thank you.
My name is Craig Lowry. I am the, I'll be your facilitator for the.
Feel free. Yeah, don't jump around, but I'll sit here. Sorry.
So we're going to go through a protocol that's going to help us get through each of the three pillars, as Claire Hertz and Dr. Brown talk around, part of our engagement numbers. We are going to also have a note taker, which is Dr. Valentino here, who captures everything that is shared during each of our conversations and feedback sessions on each of the three pillars. And so if there's anything also that we need clarification on, Dr. Valentino will be the individual to clarify or share what was asked or what to share. So before we start, we're going to dedicate the first portion, so I shared with the audience that we'll start with, Dr. Valentino, who we're going to this way to Sarah, and then we'll roll away around.
Sarah, who chairs this.
And I served on your.
The board member in the chair.
I'm Elizabeth Miller, I cover education.
Well, you're on.
Yeah.
Is it going to be?
Yeah.
So as we know earlier, we're really excited to share the strategic plan framework that we are going to be drafting, a continuation and series of the collection of feedback that we have been receiving from various constituents and stakeholders throughout the system. Basically today, we're just going to go ahead and explore and react to the draft framework that was presented. So in our copies, we have this sheet here, what we're going to do is, we're going to allow some time to go through the information that we just shared. We're starting with the first pillar, which is the academics and student support. So what we really want to do is, we want to hear your feedback and be able to entertain the plan, specific to what we have captured. We looked at the stakeholder feedback, and the stakeholder feedback was overwhelming around what are the community and what are some of our stakeholders, you know, wanting to be able to see moving forward, and specific to the utilization of the SSA funding. We know one of the common themes that stood out was socio-emotional learning, you know, which was almost a common theme throughout a lot of our stakeholder feedback. We know something else that we saw in there was around class size, and something else that we saw in the feedback was specific to academics and parents. And so one of the deals we did is go through each of these themes, also in relation to the feedback that we heard, and for us to be able to give questions around those themes, what intrigues us about any of these specific. what intrigues us about any of these specific themes of academics and programs? And what is unclear or missing? Specifically, what we feel we need in the system? Or specifically, in terms of how we're capturing the feedback that we've taken from stakeholders? What we feel is missing because we haven't articulated or articulated in the identification of those of that core theme. So we're going to go ahead and take about 10 to 12 minutes. And we're also here with Valentino as well, his superintendent. We're going to also just have him be a critical partner to be able to ask some questions. But we're also here to also help answer some of the questions of what we see around these themes. What are the themes? We know that we're going to keep this conversation at a very high level and we're not going to really get granular in detail in terms of the specifics of what's going to go into each theme. But we also want to be able to make sure that we're clarifying. So everyone here will be able to tell you what each theme entails. So we'll go inside the... So we'll go inside 10 to 12 minutes and start engaging in some conversation around these strategic themes around that.
So school-based instructional support staff doesn't refer to classroom teachers. They would be under transformative curriculum and instruction.
So school-based instructional support staff actually does also refer to teachers. That also specifically refers to maybe assistant principals, maybe instructional coaches, maybe content specialists. Pre-teacher specialists, librarians. So that would be school counselors. And so when we look at school-based instructional support staff, those are really going to be folks that are directly tied to the instructional environment that have a specific, you know, to child outcomes. So we're really looking at instructional handicap and looking at that specifically. Correct. Studiants, right. Attrition, transportation.
Next pillar.
Right. Operation. Correct. Right. We're at this level now, but the intention is that each of these themes or questions will have actually, will actually be granular in detail even to the very budget ask. It will also be forecasted out for the three-year timeframe as well. Because we know the work is not just an ask for one year. It's going to, we have to look at it across the three years.
That's what I would have imagined. I just didn't know if that existed yet or it's just trying to understand. First, it's landing on the right focus areas and then we get to that.
But I mean, transformative.
Let me piggyback on your question because I think I have the same similar question. Like, what is the difference between transformative curriculum and instruction and redesign and innovate learning systems? Like, how are those meant to be distinct?
So an example of redesigning and innovating systems is how we're looking at middle school design. Also, how we're reimagining elementary learning and nursery systems. And as we shift over to transformative curriculum and instruction, that is really looking at our very key variables curriculum. How are we transforming the way we're not only use our ways of finding success, but I'll let Lucas also speak to a little bit about the work that we're doing around curriculum and how we're kind of transforming in terms of what we're doing around the rest of our systems. How are we imagining how we utilize assessments on our system? So at least you want to consider what this is. So specifically around the transformative curriculum, one of the, within the opportunity to learn, actually is one of our little things. So we've contributed to that to the larger body of work that we see that will take, that will take place in the system. The work for us is reimagining the K-11 experience.
Tara, the free conversation that Bill had about that is part of the framing of what actually the child would be. We're looking at the real experience of a child that actually looks at how we align the work from the type of child that has, the time they get to pay for it. And that is how we develop the foundation for the child who has.
From the time they enter to the time they meet the board goal of the third grade.
Correct. Correct. And that's why there are five, there are five intersections for, how can, you've made a chart for the second one. When I was training people, we're looking at age, three, five, eight, twelve, right? So the transition concept, transition market, we're actually trying to capture the progress in terms of time. And so when we're looking at three and then we're looking at again at the grade. So we're asking the question, what's going to happen between the school and the school board? And then we then look at middle school, part of our middle school redesign. So then how are we preparing students at the elementary level to be ready for the middle school experience? So how did the foundation of the school present for middle school? That's when we begin to expand the option that we have been thinking about that as we look at middle school, how are we training and expanding the experience of the middle school scheme? Which is why we went to land to really look at how are other districts in the country not having the experience? Because middle school is one of the most spaces for students. That's when we begin to see extensive drop rates, extensive dropouts, especially in regions. The social emotional wealth goes away because there's an expectation from the system that we nurtured you all the way through and then just put you into the middle school. And we know that that's not the case. So that middle school redesign is really about providing deeper and broader opportunities for them to innovate the school and to remain engaged. So that those options and opportunities that we created in middle school, we're preparing them for high school. Because the next, the next benchmark will be high school and college to that central point. So we're going to be looking at the high school experience for the taking advantage of the CC pathways, the STEM pathways, where we are actually now solidifying some of the objectives that we're pushing through and then being able to mentor them, maybe at the high school. And then to give it to a higher school student. And so those five, those five and transition might become really, really critical. It's part of this transformation, the transformation. Because what we need to do is to figure out what we're seeing inside of those spaces, within those spaces. And that's really... Well, all of them come into play there, but we need to think there's... And what's really helpful is the vision plan that was developed by the... Do we need to reimagine the experience of our... The target shifted, right? So now wanting to make some more... What is the vision that we're trying to create? That we're trying to create cannot have the same techniques. We need to start at each grade, four, five, which is why we're actually looking at expanding the bridge during the next...
So, but the idea is that all of our schools will be offering the same level of curriculum and support.
And the word is levels, you're talking about every...
Yeah, because I would say no, they won't. I mean, if we see it already in our staffing formula, that like just in your enrollment report, our class sizes and our extra supports and our highest lead schools are significantly greater even with this budget. And you hear it from the schools that, you know, have higher SES, that, you know, they have 30 kids in a class. That's unfortunate, but that's intentional in that we've made a real commitment about concentrating our resources on our students and our schools that really need it most. Yeah. Does it make sense that that's...
It's just because I recently attended a regional meeting of the Parents for Public Schools and we had a member join us and she talked about how she was able to get her one grand to, to be able to get a intervention. But then after the intervention, they can have a similar program at the high school level where they could have adequate arts. So that's what I'm getting at. So, you know, I just wanted to make sure that all kids are going to have a base well-rounded.
The other piece we remember when we pushed algebra down to seventh, eighth grades years ago. Kids in two different schools would get an A in algebra and then go to high school and one would find out that A should have been a C. And what was your real A in chemistry lesson? There were different expectations at different schools. Guaranteed Bible breaking, say, now here in algebra, this is what's going to be the hardest for the two.
Over a team, go to seed and that's a question. I'm in general, and actually I'm glad you said something about well-rounded. Except I'm coming up a lot with, I'm still pretty quick with professionally. And I just, that without having a level of detail underneath, it's hard to really time. It makes sense to focus on what you can have, for sure. But I wonder about where the well-roundedness in our... Is it motivated?
Because I want to maybe answer and say, this is what I'm saying. We know we're talking about here, but I think...
Even in our, like, is it well-resourced compared to the elementary school? The fact that we have to, between having an art or a music... Working again as a non-organic is... Other support staff are equipped. So, you know, the idea is that we're, we're doing, we'll have an art teacher and an integrated... Well, we all know that, well, that the teachers are still being focused on academic standards, but is it not?
I think there might be some things that are...
I'm curious about that at the middle level. And then my question is just about the fundamental basis and why the middle learning. I wonder, I wonder if that incorporates what I think is a really important element around putting in our teachers with time. And it works, so it would be a question of the collecting and allowing to go generally adjust their pedagogy and their instructional practices. So very fast, right? I don't know if that is what the state or if that's under...
Well, that's interesting because you're, you're taking that just meaning the professionals, the adults in the system. And I, when I first saw that, I thought, does this pertain to parents and, you know, our, the broader community? That's not clear.
So they have a one day PD. And it's probably a component.
Yeah. So those issues that...
And this is your point, I want to talk, but you're right because that is one of the things too.
Who are these adults that we're talking about? Reports there that had... I'm wondering how, how about RSJ, the racial equity social justice one?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Another thing we brought up was the well-rounded. And specifically that this behavior portrait piece is the boards, I think, are a big, first to get beyond test scores. We'll see that as results.
So the very first initial results on the levy of 73%.
We also, if you look at the vision, it's like, oh yeah, where's, where's that? Where's the reading in math? But if we don't, we don't have third grade reading. Doesn't matter what your reading is.
So I would see if you guys can think of ways to make, make like redesign and innovate learning systems a little bit more. I'm looking for you to understand that, what that means. I mean, I think, I think these two are partners transforming the administration. Like you're talking about... Thankfully, so I would take another crack at that. And then also just this notion of where are we capturing well-rounded education? Would be nice if that kind of comment in this language, we could express that value. Way to go. I got, I got 74 with Sarah. Oh, is that what it was?
Words sound great, but they're very broad and dope. And for example, for six... I will actually say, thank...
Three yes.
It was only four ballots.
I was just going to ask you back. I mean, it's a six or seven, but it's still with only 28. What is that? What are we using here? How is that? Maybe you should refresh. Are you on Gero Mobile County State? Because it's the regional thing. Oh, so it's just looking at... No, he's talking about his measure.
The levy's done. The levy's over. Are you sure talking about metro, please?
Okay, let's move on.
Say the part of schools. We're on the second pillar. We know that there's three, there's three themes that have been identified. School modernization, IT infrastructure, safety and security. What is, what is coming out of you on the onset?
What is, what is coming out at you on the onset as we look at these themes? What questions are emerging for you in specific that these three are, these three things are.
So our daughter attended Franklin High School. She got to spend her senior year there. So we only got one year of experience. But I remember there were issues with the classroom, sort of specialty. So instead of saying, you know. I think there are a variety of issues that I wasn't super familiar with. And targeted schools. I just want to make sure that we're following a lot of factors consideration. Differentiating, including student support from the rest of the.
I just don't recall if we decided to use I M S N, I was told that it was more early on and now I know what they need. Because I'm a public health care.
Okay, we, uh, we're going to move on to the next one from my, of the four of you. Any last comments or thoughts or any discussion that you've learned from others?
So, so this one is inextricably linked to safe and supportive learning environments. And even especially like with IT, like the, the opportunities for, for learning, for special education students. And we don't take advantage of that hardly at all, differentiated.
The other cross-section there, the effect of the classroom. Wheelchair access is going to be a challenge. Initially, this three years ago. Somebody has shaken. Value in engineering. As everyone in schools has, the size of their classroom. Or somebody shared that. Jake, do I have to be the one who's just inside the room? I mean, that's, you don't have the same. But yeah, Rand was. Accessible access, we did. And that was sort of reflected in. In terms of placement of classes. We often take classes out there. Very accessible design.
To your question, this is multifunctional, you know, with other departments. So like, for example, we just went through academics and support. The office of special education. Which is safety and supportive learning environments. Which is specific to children with special needs and how we're equipped. And making sure that, you know, that they have most optimal experience as well. With school modernization, we have membership of special education that sit on our teams. They're helping us form our project leadership architects around specifically. So we make sure that we do have representation that's in our teams. So we are catering, you know, that way. I just wanted to make sure that it's a vulnerable position. You know, special education specific to modernization. But again, we have special ed, all of its, all of its.
And we're waiting for it. We should have a plan on Thursday officially.
I think we're, what we're working toward on this one is an overall orientation toward universal design, which goes hand in hand with the focus of academic institute supports on different solve, differentiate. And absolutely meeting the needs of all kids in every way and not considering a certain, you know, anyone an outlier over to the rest of the class.
I haven't seen. By grants, telling you, yeah, that high day, sort of building that.
For this, this is, um, like.
I think it does.
Right. But, um, like, traffic or, um, stabbies or dressing. It's not the best one that deals with, um, the crimes feels like the wrong word, but.
I think there's a, I think, yeah, I think we're talking about that.
Those are the shoes as well as, um, just like our, really reflects the district's perspective on what a secure building.
Yep.
Our teachers.
We are, we've already made some progress that way in terms of identifying that, you know, protocols around doors, like some of our schools have like fourteen doors that may already got drawn. Protocols around, um, that's, we know that's a best practice, but also our whole buildings don't have any kind of security.
We also know that a lot of the bell schools that our districts have. I'd say sadly. We could trust you, James, that we have a pretty great. And that is, in that sense, the difference in this building.
And that relates, Roger, I'm going to talk about it.
Well, that's what I was actually getting at too, just like the, yeah, the prevent. Yeah. Prevent.
Yeah.
And you said.
This is the first time we have. Protocols for identifying, um, we see some trouble. Our staff have it on it now and we know that will help. Got this done pretty early.
Oh, oh, okay, well. But, um, that, I talked, so you could very well say. That doesn't mean we're. I mean, I know it sounds simple when you say it, but it's not simple, so it comes to somebody and. But, you know, this is a simple force, solutions to the, the safety and the.
Be trying to do that in a way that's like, I'm working here to support it from the, if the student is doing something that's, they shouldn't be doing, that they can support.
Again, it's not like when I say.
You know, in high schools, there's.
Let's hear it.
It was on, yeah, it was on. I mean, I think it would be good to say, I have a personal encourage. Failures, I think, make you sure that that way, the pressure was, was excessive to accept you in like. The building.
Physical instructors, claws, and that's.
And actually, when I was such.
Like, it's a lot of. For. That's a second. But yeah. Would it be, you know, assuming.
But I think we're.
But I know, but I know all the.
I don't know, which is really a bold, but another problem came up. A community member at our Parents for Public Schools meeting was, the world is full of people. Talking about how it starts. Black Brown to, and they're getting offended, they all. But then I'm also caring about.
That does not.
I have lots of thoughts.
Yeah, okay, let's take this chair out. So your question is.
I don't know. I don't know.
So that's. Yeah, that's, that issue is certainly still there, certainly. The work's progress. It's also giving you skills. Been to Marysville, so you have one. For us today. Tuning in, so am I ready to learn? Yay. Am I not ready to learn? Have I got stuff I got to deal with now, you know, are you red, yellow, green? They learn to identify that basically first day of school, I think. Um, to start to give them, so that ever. Giving their, giving their, eating and then policing their own breakfast to.
Self-regulation.
Yeah.
Yeah, something that I imagine was about. Just giving you your segue.
Yeah, you're right. And really quick to, to move on with these, uh, the things that we have started to, patient, sort of, TSS where. Well, really, um, starting to train our teachers to be better equipped in terms of how we let students. You know, some of those actually are worse. Um, the classroom, a lot of the training, the classroom development, that teachers have been doing. Um, the feedback they've been receiving is, wow, I do have a lot more tools and my tools are to be able to, you know, um, equip myself to bring all learners on board, you know, in this work. Instead of me having to race first in the principles of this, to exclude a child from the learning environment. I actually have the power and the, and the resource to be able to, to be able, um, provide and be able to multitude of interventions as supports to the child. Um, and there are not a lot of features, you know, that have been going through this training. Uh, that department is the obvious support services. And we have, we have a director of MTSAs who has really launched a very, um, full agenda in terms of how we are going to capture every single educator in our system. Um, who's going to be trained on the MTSAs model in terms of how we're going to achieve. Any equipment teachers with the skills.
Multi-TSS. That's a good.
So I'll just, um, you know, same line, I think it's.
That being said, we've got more kids showing us. Where school is at last year. They had to clear recess because kindergarten. Songs are divine, children are looking for sex.
So that's why I was trying to clarify.
A number of adults to make sure that child was.
Under this title, we're not taking all our, our money and we're going to. Are you disinterested in this?
And it's just not getting wrong, it's some, it's, it's nation-wide. When I left kindergarten, when I left, you know, we were trying to grapple with how. We had sixty percent bites in kindergarten, first grade.
I'll see if the center, we're getting all that for this year, I don't know what the kids ditched parts of. We've heard a lot of. Two hundred and fifty having more. Oh, is that more or over?
Results are a lot more. We're not immune to capital culture, um, which on this one, it focuses on the adult. We see that in sixteen, since that broke us, so. You know, we're things that are.
Is this support nurture? And I don't disagree.
There's so many icons, I mean, there almost has to, those kinds of, not that it's a lot, a lot of.
Look, it's Frederick Taylor.
And so, I, yeah. That would, it would nice to see a category, talent pipeline that support and nurture is the, you know, personal, personal goal to growth. Like, how, how do we, how do we invest in our current employees, which is both those things? But if, if that was maybe a little more. Professional. Right. Yeah, or just, you know, advancement, acquiring more.
So we've talked about, you know, helping parents to be, certainly being able to train their children to get a touch.
But I think.
Sort of that, that higher. How do we reward, talk to.
So how do we educate the passion that you all have in navigating?
Right. Right, right, right.
How do we, is it, is it helpful to change how, the question hitters, right? Or do you make sure that you have that, that we, we're not, because we're such a primal, you know, a narrative, it's actually. Yeah.